The City Council Committee of the Whole will meet on Monday, November 14th, 2022, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing City Council rules and orders in person at City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, second floor, and via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Act of 2022. In-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, and the public may also participate, listen, and/or view this meeting while in progress via the remote participation platform Zoom through any one of the following ways. Please click the link below to join the webinar found in the agenda, password 161672, or phone 877-853-5257, or 888-475-4499. Webinar ID 82222812978. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so on matters not requiring a public hearing, we will post on the City of Salem's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Persons requiring auxiliary aids and services for effective communication such as sign language interpreter, an assisted listening device, or print material in digital format, or reasonable modification in program services policies or activities may contact the City of Salem ADA Coordinator at the number found in the agenda as soon as possible and no less than two business days before the meeting, program, or event. The City Council Committee of the Whole met in City Council Chambers on November 14th, 2022, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing Number 633, Discussing Updates to Rules and Orders. Notice of this meeting was posted on November 9th, 2022, at 6:10 PM. Let's see, we have all members in the chamber except for Counselor McCarthy, who is with us in Zoom land. So we'll do all votes, roll call. So, just to set the stage for the discussion tonight, I don't expect that we're going to be done with the rules tonight. I expect that we'll have to have a second meeting, at least to hash out some wording for some things under question. My intention is to start with the first rule and then go all the way through. If people would like to offer an amendment, put it up for discussion, we can do that. There are a couple of obvious things, if you've read through the rules, that could use some updating. And there's also some language that could use some plain English language translations from archaic language. In those cases, we can note them, and I'll have Ms. Renard and the City Clerk, Eileen Simons, go through them and offer something that makes a little bit more sense. And I have a couple of notes on those things also. My intention also is to allow public comment from any attendees, and we'll take that up probably close to 6:30, so that we can adjourn this meeting at 6:45 in order to get ready for the next meeting, the special City Council meeting. Any questions before we start? Okay, we're going to start with...
Yes?
Do we have a copy of what we're discussing now? I know it's been sent by mail, but no hard copy?
Uh, I do, I... Does anyone else need a hard copy? Okay. Here you go. Oh, okay. Nope.
No, it's just the section.
It's just, yeah. It starts on page 15. Yeah, if you can read it. I'm sorry. I will also read through things and, okay. Okay. There we go. Okay, that's better. Okay, so Section 1 is Notice of Meetings. This is an easy one. Counselor Ricardi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would have a few suggestions on this section. I know I don't receive the agenda mailed, physical mail to me, so we would probably want to revise that. I don't know if we want to say electronically provided, or electronically delivered to... Also, I would like to note that I am not a "them," so perhaps we can change that to gender-neutral language as "them," and remove "via residence." And there's also a second gendered reference within that section as well. I'm curious if the city solicitor had any feedback on this section as well.
If the city solicitor had any feedback, I... Not yet. Okay. My intention was to note the things that we come up with in this meeting, and then send it to her and the city clerk to get their feedback for our next meeting. So, okay, so electronically delivered as opposed to mailed or delivered to them at their residence.
Correct.
Okay. And then gender-neutral, we'll go throughout the rules, just to make that clear. Okay. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Madam President. I would also like to add that emailed and printed for the counselors at their request.
Okay.
Which I get, and I think a few other counselors get, and we just have to check our mail downstairs.
So printed for counselors at their request, and to be picked up, to be picked up at City Hall. Okay. And the other thing I will... Oh, Counselor Ricardi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm just curious about that one, because this is just specifically for notice of the meetings. So should we add in any... It doesn't reference anywhere in here about the agenda and the backup information. This is just a specific notice of meetings?
Okay, then I'll pull that out.
We can add the agenda also to this, the agenda and backup material.
Right, but I don't think I need a printed copy of the notice of the meetings.
Okay. All right. Anything else on that one? Because I do have another... Okay. So the last phrase that said, "Except that jurors may be drawn at said meeting," is old language at a time when the City Council did choose jurors for trials, which is very interesting. So I will ask that we strike that. All right. So anything else on one? All right. So I will submit to them and get some better wording, and then we can go through and vote on whether to approve that amendment at the next meeting. Does that make sense? Just in the... Just to keep this on task. Okay. Section 2 is the quorum. At all meetings of the council, six members shall constitute a quorum for all transaction of business. Seems pretty straightforward. Section 3, Pres... Yeah. Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just moving a little bit ahead of what we are facing, in the fact that we might be conducting a business with 10 members because of special things going to happen in front of us. Whether the forum constitute 50% plus 1 of the group, if we become to be 10 members, that's going to be the number.
So you're looking to modify this based on passage of the Home Rule Amendment?
Exactly.
And I will make a note of that. And we can ask Ms. Renard to add that language, to make that clearer.
Thank you.
That's fine. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Madam President. 50% plus 1 is still going to be 6.
Correct.
So it doesn't have to be changed.
10 plus 1 is 6. That's true. I know, I think you're going for the supermajority, or the... Yeah, yeah. And that might be a good place to bring that out, what that equals, but, okay. Right, but you would have to be... If we get into that in this quorum, which I'm not sure if we will, but anyways, yeah. Counselor Hepworth.
I think it makes sense to just future-proof this as much as possible. So who knows what the size of the council will be in 20 years. I assume it's going to be the same as it is now, but I think that the suggestion to say a simple majority, I think, sounds fair and reasonable, and will prevent some future body from having...
So instead of 6 members, just say simple majority, which means 50% plus 1.
But agreed, it's still 6 for now, but who knows in the future?
50% plus 1. Okay, yeah, actually, that makes sense. All right. Section 3. Counselor Ricardi, did you have something? Or... No? Okay. Section 3 is President Duties at Beginning of Meeting Pro Tempore. Anything? I think in paragraph 3, all of the rise and stand stuff needs to be stricken finally. I think we struck that for this year because of these meetings, but my suggestion is to just strike that. Okay. So instead, it will say something like, raise their hand to be counted, and if any member fails to raise their hand until counted, he or she will still be counted as voting to sustain. Okay. Counselor Watsonville.
Thank you, Madam President. I would also note that gender-inclusive language does not limit to he/she.
He/she.
So there's a number of points where it says he/she in the section that we should alter as well. Thank you.
Yep. So generic, gender-neutral, which I actually did make a note of, instead of saying he/she at the beginning of that third paragraph, just saying the president and the president, just to keep it consistent. Okay. Noted. Section 5... Nope, Section 4. Vacation of Chair. Any questions? Section 5, Roll Call Votes. Any questions on that? Nope. Section 6, Order of Taking Up Questions. Questions? No. Section 6A, Disposition of Defeated Questions and Motions. Okay. Section 7, Status of Motion After Reading, Withdrawal of Motion. All right. Section A, When Motions Shall Be Reduced to Writing. Counselor Ricardi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering if we're also indicative the clerk requests it? Because right now, it's just the president or members are requested by the clerk, because I know she's generally the one that requests it.
We should definitely add the city clerk. Yep. Anything else on that? Okay. Section 9, Control of Floor When Members Rise at the Same Time. So this is the same thing where you're really requesting to be heard, and by raising your hand. It's not necessarily rising. Counselor Hepworth.
I think we could just change it to seek recognition.
Seek recognition is good. Seek, yes. Okay. Anything else on that? Section 10, Speaking by Members. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you. Two things. That section has a need to rise, which we should change the same. And then there's a clause that says respectfully address the presiding officer as Mr. President or Madam President, and I would like to change that to respectfully address the presiding officer as Council President with optional their last name.
Any discussion on that? Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. In that point, I think it's made more general when you say Mr. or Madam. It's based on the fact that the respect is general. It's not as a... We all councilor, that's my understanding, and when you say Council President, even though the president or whoever hold the cities is at the highest position to direct the meeting, we all can get confused by saying Mr. President or Madam President. I think it's give more of a distinct name for that moment, making sure that it's differentiating from the whole group of councilors that we are all together. So my point to that is that by leaving Madam President, Mr. President, I think it's more appropriate. That's my humble belief.
Counselor Hepworth.
Thank you. I think that we should allow each president to choose how they want to be addressed. So I think if we just say respectfully address is fine. I think that, you know, I assume Madam President is fine for some, Mr. President is fine for others, Council President may be fine for others in the future, but I think that makes sense just to say respectfully address, and then let the Council President choose how they like to be addressed.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you. I'm personally offended by language such as madam, mister, whatever. I think it's prehistoric. I think it's misogynist, and I think we should change it to be Council President. We refer to counselors Counselor Ricardi, Counselor McLean, Counselor Prozniewski. We don't say mister, you know, Counselor Prozniewski. We don't say madam, Counselor Merkel. So I think it would be more consistent, and I think it really would bring us into the 20th century and beyond.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you. I already say President Marsillo. That's what I've been saying.
I have to say this year, I've been addressed in many different ways.
Yeah, so, and just because I'm not... I don't mean... I generally don't use mister or madam, so I've just taken upon myself, I guess, to... But that's what I've always used, is President Marsillo. And that seems comfortable to me. But I also like Counselor Hepworth's idea of asking the president how they'd like to be addressed, but I'll throw that out there. I like President Marsillo, or whoever's next.
I do too. Counselor Ricardi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. President Marsillo. I like the idea of removing any genderality from it. No mister and madam. I find madam, I don't find myself as a madam. So I like that council address the presiding officer as... Actually, presiding officer as Council President. I don't think we should be using names similarly to the ward counselors in removing personalities from the position itself, of making it more of a, you're addressing the position versus the person situation. But I definitely agree with Council President as being like a good kind of common ground for addressing with an official title.
So without a last name, just Council President? Okay. Anyone else? Counselor McLean.
Thank you. I would agree that removing the mister and madam just makes sense. It's consistent with the rest of the effort that we're making to create a gender-neutral rule set, and I think Council President is quite clear in terms of who we're addressing. I don't think we need to overthink it, and I don't think we have to leave it as an open question in our rules to say, ask the president how they want to be addressed. I think we can make a simple declarative statement, address them as Council President, and leave it at that, and I think it will work just fine.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Varela.
Thank you. I'll keep it brief, but I completely agree that it should be gender-neutral, and Council President is appropriate. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor McCarthy, do you want to weigh in on this one? Being the dean of the council?
Here we go. There it is. There I go, I got it now. Thank you, President Marsillo. I guess it's, I hate to say it, I'm old school. I learned the rules 15 years ago, and it was accepted, and it was always, it was never meant to be anything but as a sign of respect, but I understand the desire to change the language, and I'll just have to reteach myself to refer to the chair or the president by their position as not by madam or mister. So I think it's time, and it makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Watsonville.
Just to close the loop, I think that it's important to note, to the at-large counselor's point about the key differentiator between other counselors. I think president linguistically is the key differentiator in that, no matter how we phrase it. I think if we're using the word president or chair, I think it's pretty clear that we're addressing the office, the officer, in that way. And so I, you know, I am all for removing the gendered language, absolutely, but I just wanted to make a note that I think that the president is the key differentiator there of all the other words. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Good? Okay. All righty. Where are we? What number are we on? 11? Oh, okay. Okay, 11. Motions Received When Question Is Under Debate, Precedent, Form of Previous Question, Motion to Strike, and Acting Clause. Any questions? We may ask for some updates on the language here. We don't ever use this term, "Shall the main question be now put?" So we could clean that up a little bit. Okay. Rights and Duties of Members. Section 12, Interrupting Speaking Member, Calling Members to Order. This is just quickly, another one where it says, "By rising to call to order." So that might need some wordsmithing there. And it just is allowing another member of the council to point, to bring kind of a point of order, to just calm things down a little bit. So, but I think the rising probably isn't appropriate here, but we'll find a way to allow that to happen. Any other questions on that? Okay. Section 13, Voting When Conflict of Interest is Present. Any questions? Okay. Section 14, Motion for Reconsideration, Notice of Same. Okay. Section 15... Oh, Counselor Hepworth.
Can we strike? Can we just strike that? Is it... I'm just curious, I guess maybe Counselor McCarthy could... If he has any feedback, or anyone else has any feedback, I'm just curious, if that needs to exist. It seems to be something that's used to confuse mostly.
A member... Oh, Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Chair Marsillo. The motion to reconsider is needed, especially with matters with regards to finance, and when sometimes they're timely, because if there's a matter that's been asked to reconsider, basically, any member who has an option is to go into the clerk's office within 24 hours to reconsider their vote on, say, a bond authorization. But when you vote to not reconsider, that means you're not going to reconsider, you're basically waiving your right to reconsider, because if you were to reconsider, say, like with regards to the budget, then they'd have to call a special meeting, and if the budget wasn't passed in time, it could really throw a loop into things. So that's there just to, on specific votes, to make sure that everyone understands that you're going to stand behind your vote, and you're not going to walk into the clerk's office within 24 hours and change, and move to change your vote, which may potentially affect a whole bunch of different things. So that's the reason why it's still there.
I understand the... And thank you, Counselor McCarthy. I guess my question is, does the ability to reconsider need to remain? If it does, that's fine. I just, I've never, I haven't seen it used. I wonder when the last time a vote has been changed.
We reconsider after all budget items. I mean, after the...
We do the motion to reconsider in the hopes it will not prevail. What I'm saying is, do we need the ability to reconsider at all?
Counselor McCarthy, I think that's what this is, right?
Yeah, basically, that's what this is. Because everyone, the rules state that you have the ability to reconsider unless you vote not to reconsider, and then when you vote not to reconsider, basically means that everyone, when they walk out of the council chambers on any given night, when there's been matters in front of them that were asked for reconsideration, once the reconsideration has, doesn't prevail, that means whatever votes were taken that night are going to stand, and someone can't go change their vote, and then potentially cause a matter that is maybe time-sensitive for whatever reason, could be a bond authorization for a school, or the budget, or anything that would then require a special, to schedule a special meeting, and do a whole bunch of other things. So that's why it's in there. It's just, it's just a backup to basically, because once we take the votes on those, whatever matters, they are bond authorization or budget, then the clerk sends them up to the mayor's office, and then the mayor signs them. So that could, that could throw a timeline issue into the whole process. That's why, that's why it's there, and that's why I believe it should stay.
So I... Okay, I think I'm misunderstanding. So this is just for the motion to reconsider in the hopes of... I'm sorry. My point was even the ability to reconsider at all, just curious if that's something we can remove. But it sounds like this, this one right here is just the motion to reconsider, which we should obviously keep in there. Apologies.
Well, but that's what it is. It's just that when you add, in the hopes that it does not prevail, you're saying why you're offering the motion to reconsider.
I don't want to get wrapped around the act, so I apologize. So what I'm trying to say is that the ability to reconsider, I feel like, is something that doesn't necessarily need to stay. Not the motion to reconsider in the hopes that it will not prevail, but the ability to reconsider at all is something that I question whether it needs to be there or not, but I don't think that's what we're talking about in this one right here, and I don't want to get us hung up on this.
Okay. I do want to ask Counselor McCarthy, is there anything that keeps a counselor from reconsidering something within the same meeting? So if they've changed their mind during the meeting? Is there a rule that says that you can't go back and ask to go back to a previous item for reconsideration?
I believe that after, after something has been, if I may, Chair Marsillo, I believe after, after a vote has been taken, the ability to reconsider, I think that would be up to the matter of the discretion of the chair. Because once a matter's been acted on and voted, then it would require the chair to rule on whether or not you could go back and revote. I mean, sometimes a member may ask to have their vote recorded as negative or against in some matter, because they want to be on record, because it wasn't a roll call vote. But when it comes down to the roll call votes, basically, once you call, I think it's within 24 hours, I don't know, I've never, I've never seen anyone reconsider their vote in, on, during a meeting, or actually taking advantage of the, or using the rule that you can have 24 hours. So I can't honestly say, but if you could do it during a meeting, but my guess would be no.
Okay. I will look into that. Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam...
Chair, just chair.
Chair Marsillo. We had to get used to...
We haven't changed a rule yet, by the way, so...
I know, I know, but we had to practice.
It's a free-for-all. You can do what you need to do.
My question is to clarify a little bit of what we're doing here tonight. I know this is our rule, but I know that fundamental change or anything that we do, and that's a question that I have, they might have to be, I mean, align with some type of other legal matter that we deal with. So my question is, the legal department, we don't have to take a look at any change that we propose here. And I know you mentioned we're going to entertain that into the legal department and the city clerk. But if we are not sure in the fact that those changes need to be done, why we, those matters, leave it up to the clarification of the legal department before we move forward? Because if we're going to guess, and this is it, or this isn't, at the end of the day, what we can do is not really...
The motion to reconsider is needed, especially with matters with regards to finance and when sometimes they're timely, because if there's a matter that's been asked to reconsider, basically, any member who has an option is to go into the clerk's office within 24 hours to reconsider their vote on, say, a bond authorization. But when you vote to not reconsider, that means you're not going to reconsider, you're basically waiving your right to reconsider, because if you were to reconsider, say like with regards to the budget, then they'd have to call a special meeting, and if the budget wasn't passed in time, it could really throw a loop into things. So, that's there just to, on specific votes, to make sure that everyone understands that you're going to stand behind your vote, and you're not going to walk into the clerk's office within 24 hours and move to change your vote, which may potentially affect a whole bunch of different things. So, that's the reason why it's still there.
I understand the, and thank you, Counselor McCarthy. I guess my question is, does the ability to reconsider need to remain? If it does, that's fine. I just, I've never, I haven't seen it used. I wonder when the last time a vote has been changed.
We reconsider after all budget items.
We do the motion to reconsider in the hopes it will not prevail. What I'm saying is, do we need the ability to reconsider at all?
Counselor McCarthy, I think that's what this is, right?
Yeah, basically, that's what this is, because everyone, the rules state that you have the ability to reconsider unless you vote not to reconsider. And then, when you vote not to reconsider, basically means that everyone, when they walk out of the council chambers on any given night, when there's been matters in front of them that were asked for reconsideration, once the reconsideration doesn't prevail, that means whatever votes were taken that night are going to stand, and someone can't go change their vote and then potentially cause a matter that is maybe time-sensitive for whatever reason, could be a bond authorization for a school, or the budget, or anything that would then require a special, to schedule a special meeting and do a whole bunch of other things. So, that's why it's in there. It's just a backup to basically, because once we take the votes on those, whatever matters, our bond authorization or budget, then the clerk sends them up to the mayor's office, and then the mayor signs them. So, that could throw a timeline issue into the whole process. That's why it's there, and that's why I believe it should stay.
So, I, okay, I think I'm misunderstanding. So, this is just for the motion to reconsider in the hopes, I'm sorry. My point was even the ability to reconsider at all, just curious if that's something we can remove. But it sounds like this one right here is just the motion to reconsider, which we should obviously keep in there. Apologies.
Well, but that's what it is. It's just that when you add in the hopes that it does not prevail, you're saying why you're offering the motion to reconsider.
I don't want to get wrapped around the act, so I apologize. What I'm trying to say is that the ability to reconsider, I feel like, is something that doesn't necessarily need to stay. Not the motion to reconsider in the hopes that it will not prevail, but the ability to reconsider at all is something that I question whether it needs to be there or not, but I don't think that's what we're talking about in this one right here, and I don't want to get us hung up on this.
Okay. I do want to ask Counselor McCarthy, is there anything that keeps a counselor from reconsidering something within the same meeting? So, if they've changed their mind during the meeting, is there a rule that says that you can't go back and ask to go back to a previous item for reconsideration?
I believe that after something has been, if I may, Chair Marcelo, I believe after a vote has been taken, the ability to reconsider, I think that would be up to the matter of the discretion of the chair, because once a matter's been acted on and voted, then it would require the chair to rule on whether or not you could go back and revote. I mean, sometimes a member may ask to have their vote recorded as negative or against in some matter, because they want to be on record, because it wasn't a roll call vote. But when it comes down to the roll call votes, basically, once you call, I think it's within 24 hours, I don't know, I've never, I've never seen anyone reconsider their vote during a meeting or actually taken advantage of the, or used in the rule that you can have 24 hours. So, I can't honestly say, but if you could do it during a meeting, but my guess would be no.
Okay. I will look into that. Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Chair Marcelo. We had to get used to.
We haven't changed a rule yet, by the way.
I know, I know, but we had to practice.
It's a free-for-all. You can do what you need to do.
My question is to clarify a little bit of what we're doing here tonight. I know this is our rule, but I know that fundamental change or anything that we do, and that's a question that I have, they might have to be, I mean, aligned with some type of other legal matter that we deal with. So, my question is, the legal department, we're going to have to take a look at any change that we propose here. And I know you mentioned we're going to entertain that into the legal department and the city clerk. But if we are not sure in the fact that those changes need to be done, why we, those matters, leave it up to the clarification of the legal department before we move forward? Because if we're going to guess, and this is it or this isn't, at the end of the day, what we can do is do not really advance in any matter. So, my point is, can we, especially in this one, we are not having any common ground, can we leave that open to discuss with the legal department?
Yep. All of these things I'm making notes on, and they will go to legal and to the city clerk for their opinion on it, to make sure that it is following the law, the changes that are being proposed here. It's why we're not voting on amendments tonight. We'll come in with proposed amendments that are legal, and then we'll take them one at a time at a future meeting. So, that was my intention. We're not going to, I'm not going to try to guess what the legal way of saying these things or doing these things are. We're just going to propose them and see what Ms. Renard thinks.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Varela.
Thank you, Council President Marcelo. I just wanted to backtrack a little bit. Apologies, I didn't get an opportunity to speak about section 13, voting when a conflict of interest is present. My concern is, I don't believe that when it comes to except when there's a tie vote in which this case they shall vote, it's really representative of Chapter 268A of Massachusetts General Laws, a conflict of interest is a conflict of interest. Whether it be a tie vote, I still believe that's a conflict of interest. So, I think that needs to be looked at with the Massachusetts general law and possibly stricken.
Can you say that one more time? What is the phrase?
So, the phrase I'm concerned with is, however, he or she in any question except when there is a tie vote, in which case she or she, he or she shall vote.
I thought you were saying typo. That's why I'm like, what are you talking about here?
Yeah, sorry, sorry. I'm like mumbling. So, if there's a tie vote, I don't think that's still appropriate.
A tie vote? Okay.
I think a conflict of interest is a conflict of interest.
Okay. Thank you. I will make a note of that. Anything else up to section 14? Okay. Section 15, oh, I guess I'm going against my, can we take a pause here and see if anyone has any public comment up to this point?
Before that.
Yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Chair Marcelo, with regards to Counselor Varela's, just his question, the only, out of appearance of conflict of interest, anyone who has a, maybe a matter that comes before the council can recuse themselves to avoid conflict of interest. But if it, what's referenced there is if at such time there isn't enough members left to vote, or if there is a tie, then what would happen is the member would then have to identify themselves and identify what their conflict of interest is before the vote. It's, you don't, we don't like, that's why we ask people to recuse themselves if they have an issue, but if it comes down to, in the case of a tie or not having enough members to vote on an issue, then you can invoke, legal can give you the, you can invoke the rule, which will allow you to participate in the vote. But it's, we try to avoid that when at all necessary, but in the cases of a tie or in the cases of not having enough members voting, then that rule can be waived as long as you identify what your conflict is. And I think that's part of Mass General Law, but Beth can weigh in on that.
Maybe we can refer to the Mass General Law in this case. Okay. Anything else? Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Marcelo. I wanted to also express that that isn't comfortable. I agree with Counselor Varela that a conflict is a conflict. I'm not, I wouldn't be comfortable with the vote taken. That just seems contradictory here, that they're stating, you know, that if you have a conflict, you shouldn't vote, but then all of a sudden, if we need a vote, then it's okay. So, I agree that that's not comfortable as well, and maybe the vote shouldn't be taken. Thank you.
We'll definitely get some more guidance from Ms. Renard on this one. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Council President. I likewise agree with the word six counselor, I think, excuse me, word seven, thank you, my esteemed colleague. It's an interesting thing to point out. I actually think that's the worst scenario in which to have a person with a conflict of interest voting when you have a tied vote in the chamber and allowing the person with the most immediate personal stake to decide which way it goes. That's worse than just, you know, having a conflict of interest, you're giving them an extreme amount of power to decide the decision while they have that conflict of interest. So, if the idea of this rule is simply to mirror what is written into Mass state law, and Mass state law would otherwise allow that person to potentially vote, then I think we should consider changing this to make it explicit that in no circumstance will a person with a conflict of interest be allowed to vote on the matter.
Okay. Counselor Watsonfeld.
Thank you, Chair Marcelo. I am in agreement.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We're going to take a pause here and see if anyone from the public wishes to make a public comment on the rules so far. If you're, if you've joined our Zoom meeting, you can use the raise hand function. Seeing none. Oh, please. Oh, can you come up to the microphone and speak directly into the mic? Thank you. And set your name and address for the record. You know, you know the drill here.
Charlel Point, 34 Raymond Avenue. The conflict of interest, it's come up where there is a form that they can fill out prior to a meeting. Let's say you have a budget, and one of you works for the city, like when Counselor Flynn was here. He worked for the fire department. Now, you got to vote on the fire department's budget. If he filled out something prior to the meeting, knowing that there may be a conflict, opposing sides, there is a form that you can fill out for the conflict of interest, spelling out what your conflict is, because he stands to gain by the budget being passed, even though it's not a direct line that you're voting on, it's still considered a conflict of interest. In that case, because he's made that very clear, it's on file in the clerk's office, this form, that there may be a conflict, then if there's a tie vote, that's why he's allowed to do it, because he made it aware. It's documented. So, I mean, you can consider that too, because if it ever came up in a budget and you held up the whole budget, that's time-sensitive. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. It's great that you're here with us tonight. Okay. Seeing no one else, we can take a couple more for a few more minutes. Section 15, same when such motion is in order, number of such motions which may be entertained. This is back to reconsideration, by the way. Counselor Cohen.
I just have a question, Chair Marcelo, for the body. If we're going to go section by section, we're going to never get to the regular meeting, is it possible that we can just go to the sections that people have issues with?
No. We're going to review the rules. I said this is going to be more than one meeting. I think it behooves us to take the time to review the rules. Okay.
I wasn't suggesting that. I was saying, you know, if people had time to review the rules, then we could address the ones that people have issues with.
Understood. But it's also good to just go through and take a few minutes to review the rules. Okay. Section 16, number of times members may speak on the same question. We use this a lot. Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. This, to me, I know it's being changed, and we've been practicing, but in some cases, we had topic or matters in front of us that required more than one intervention, especially when time-sensitive matter come in front of us, we had to make sure that the body explained, the body expressed themselves. And sometimes in one particular amount of time, you know, you can know maybe present all of you, all of you, all of your facts. So, my point to this is, can we have a section with a special occasion allowed by the president, whoever conducting the meeting, to give more than two time to speak in any matter once? And secondly, what you say right here, same question, it is the same as matter of this is, when it's a question in the air?
It's the only question under discussion.
Okay, but when I bring this to.
So, are you saying like if there's an amendment to something, and then you start talking about, so that would be a different question? So, that would be a second?
Exactly. In the same questions, sometimes a right to be more than one opportunity for people to speak and present why they considering that is to be.
Right. So, I would say that what I try to do, and I think what I'm doing, is when the discussion moves to a new amendment, and that's under discussion, that starts the counter again, and each person gets two comments. I think what we're trying, what we, and what this rule is trying to do, is to say that discussion needs to happen in the committees, and that's what they're there for. And the larger questions are either going to the committee of the whole, or they're going to a committee and co-posted. And so, people need to get to those meetings if they want to be part of the discussion. Things should not be sent out of committee, and then the same members come back to the council with additional comment and additional amendments, and either send it back to the committee for further discussion, or keep within the two comment. Counselor Dominguez.
I understand. Thank you. I understand that, but the fact that we are not in the same committee all the time, I can come with the general meetings without having all the facts, because I was not able to be in the committee, and I wanted to have the opportunity to present my fact, and in two terms, sometimes it's not enough. I would say maybe to modify that, to have in a special occasion where it's permitted, allow the councilor, whoever had the turn, to speak more than once, in a special matter.
Yep. So, okay, I'm going to let other people speak, but I hear you. I hear you. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcelo. So, although only a counselor for 10 months, I've been to almost every meeting for 13 years, and when this was instituted, I found it to be very positive and very productive. If people know they can only speak twice about a question, I think their tendency is to be a little bit more to the point. And also, I feel like one of the things that we talked about at our retreat was trying to make our council meetings more attractive to the public, and I think having more concise meetings where we can have dialogue in committees if necessary, and we can do that, we can always refer something to a committee, I think will make it more viable for the public to come.
Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Council President. In addition to, in addition to the prior comments about directing deeper discussion towards the committee activity, I think this rule is extremely important in its own right. I think it helps to maintain the general sense of wanting to keep personality out of our exchanges by keeping us from getting into extended one-on-one exchanges, where perhaps most members of the floor have said what they had to say, but you have a few who really would like to bear down on the issue, and so I think it's really important for maintaining that decorum. I would also just point out that the language of the rule as written does not necessarily preclude a member from speaking more than once, right? It's if somebody objects, then it can be limited to just two comments. In most cases, if we've been working with it recently, the council president has been maintaining that order and saying, you've had your two chances to speak, or I'll allow some other people to speak before you can have your second turn. So, I don't think it precludes us from diving deep on an issue if the matter requires it, but I do think it's an important tool to have in our toolbox to make sure that we don't get into a situation where we have somebody trying to hold a filibuster in our city council chambers.
Counselor Ricciardi.
Thank you, Council President. I, good word for counselor, just really summarized everything that I was going to say, but I wanted to agree with it, it's very important for decorum. And also, there are 11 of us in the body. If we all spoke three times, that would be 33 comments, and we would be here until Saturday morning. And filibuster is a great word, like we don't want, we want to avoid that. So, I think, I know for myself, knowing that I can only speak twice on a topic, I'm very thoughtful with what I'm going to say. If I have multiple questions, I try to prepare and have them ahead of time, kind of group them together, so it really helps avoid the back and forth and to get, you know, our points out all at once.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Marcelo. I just want to say that I agree with counselors Ricciardi and counselors McLean.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Watsonfeld.
Thank you, Council President. Just, I think this is, just a reminder for myself in this conversation, this is why we reinstituted the committee of the whole in and of itself, right? So that we could have more working conversations outside of council meetings, formal council meetings. I think that it's been serving really well for the purpose, and I agree with everything else that's been said, and it helps us come really fully prepared, and it's a wonderful option to further debate outside of council. Thanks.
Yeah, I think I'm going to add here that I think it creates some discipline among the counselors in that if you know you can't react to every comment that's being made, you pause and you listen to what everyone has to say first, and then you respond for your second comment. And I think that that's really important. I think it's important to allow everyone to speak and give their opinion, and have as full a discussion as we can at a city council meeting, and have the fuller back and forth with as many comments as you want in committee meetings. And I think that's, you know, keeping the meetings on point and dealing with things is important. Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. And I do understand, and I'm in favor of that, my point is that there are some topic or matter that need deeply more conversation with what we have in the time limit that we have. I know that we are limited with what we do in terms of time, but that was one of the reasons why we was elected to discuss and make sure that we not only present our point of view, but also debate. And the debates not happen sometimes because it's limited. One thing that I wanted to remind to this body is that if we wanted to project who we are as a government to the general public in regard of the liberty that everybody had to speak, if we limited us as members of the body, how come we're going to make sure that the whole general public is going to come and speak about it? We need to, we need to make sure this is a job that we was elected for. It's not easy. I know it's not, it's not, it's not the right scenario, but when you have it, when you want to have a healthy discussion, you need to leave it open so people express themselves the way they want. And when you're limited, just like you controlling the way, the outcome of that conversation, and that's not the intention of this body. The bodies is made up to make sure that everybody have a voice, and that who you represent be represented when you speak. And when you don't have all of this capacity to do it, because it's limited, because the system is in place, it's a limitation that is not healthy, doesn't want to allow a very healthy conversation. Most cases, I hear after the meetings, so many comments from the general public, things happen in one, two, three, which is good. Fine, we finish eventually, but that doesn't mean that the general public satisfied what we've done here. We need to make sure that we deliver what we was elected for, and by limiting people to speak for one or two terms, it's a limitation that I don't think is healthy. I respect the rules, I follow the rule, I think that's expedited meetings, I think that the meeting is getting a little bit more smooth. People had to make sure that they say what they want to say in one or two terms, but that doesn't mean that is everything is okay. I had to speak for myself, I'm not the one that maybe speak the more freely one, and I had to think twice in order for me to formulate my answer. So, if I had to keep in mind that I only had two terms, it is a limitation that I have that is not equal for everybody. And I think we need to make sure that we open up for everybody, and if we are, if we wanted to really deliver in the city where we are, in a very diverse city, we need to make sure that everybody's equal, and that's my point over there. So, that's why I bring this point. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Watsonfeld.
Thank you, Council President. Respectfully, I think the purpose of the committee of the whole meetings is for debate, and a counselor is empowered at any point in council meetings to motion to move a question to the committee of the whole for further debate. I do not feel personally limited about my ability to process or
I do not feel personally limited about my ability to process, or my freedom of speech, or my ability to represent my constituents in council meetings on our standard, you know, regular council meetings, because I know that there is opportunity to debate outside of those two questions. And I think that there is, most of the time, plenty of time for homework, outreach, engagement. You know, I think that we come in here at regular council meetings prepared, having done our homework, having reached out. And if we do not feel that there has been enough public engagement, it is our responsibility absolutely to say so, and we are empowered to motion to move something out of this chambers to a future meeting for further debate. So I don't, I don't, they are not all the same. You know, they are not all weighed the same. I think this rule does not limit our ability to debate, in my mind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. In the interest of time, and since we have to switch over to another meeting, I would like to entertain a motion to keep this in committee. Counsel Ricardi.
Thank you. I move to keep this matter in committee.
Second.
Counsel Ricardi moves to keep this in committee, seconded by Counsel Varela. I will do a roll call vote. Make sure we still have Counsel, we have lost Counsel McCarthy. Okay. Counsel Cohen.
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez.
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counsel Prozniewski.
Yes.
Counsel Ricardi.
Yes.
Counsel Varela.
Yes.
Counsel Watsonfeld.
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I got everybody right? Okay. That motion passes 10 to 0. I will take another motion. Counsel Dominguez. Counselor Dominguez motions to adjourn. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.